Time is now 6:45. Let's call this town meeting board for September 8th and roll call.
All right, Peggy.
Is that what you're doing?
Thank you, Board.
Item C is public comment. Anybody here wish to speak to the public on pension board? I continue to approve the minutes from the pension board meeting dated 7/14/2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting dated 7/14/25.
And I'd like to add one correction. In the minutes, it was to approve the 6/11/25 meeting, special pension meeting minutes.
Instead of 6:30?
Yeah, instead of 6:30. I'll second.
Any other motion or correction? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Old business, we have non-new business item one to consider an act on pension distributions at your request. So I have a request for Mark Boragard from the school, custodian. Started date of hire was February 25th, 2008, and his termination date was 12/21/22. So he had 13.8 years of service. He is looking for a monthly pension for $550.50 starting September 1st.
With the motion to approve the pension distribution for Mark Boragard, $550.50 per month starting 1 September 25.
Now, second here.
Any other discussion? Any other favors saying aye?
Aye.
Any other items for the agenda? If not, commit an motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
6:47, thank you. Okay, the time is now 7:00. Let's call this town plan for the board of select meetings order for September 8th. I ask you please rise in the presence of all.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and roll call.
All right, Peggy.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, on the item C, there is no minutes in your packet for the 28th, so I ask that you consider any action on the board of select meeting for 8/25/25?
With the motion to approve the meeting minutes for 8/25/25?
I have some additions to it. On number five, where it said you discussed an act on the qualification bids, I did say at that time that the reason that I abstained was because I just got the six-inch packet 10 minutes before that. And the same on number six. I had no time to even look at the bids at all, because again, handed the packet 10 minutes before the meeting, so I want that written to the record. Oh, it wasn't. I said it during the meeting, so it's not reflected in the minutes.
I'll amend my motion.
And I'll second.
Add that.
Okay, with the amendment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item D, public comment. Anybody here wish to speak to the public, wish to speak to the board of select? If you do so, make sure that for the record, though, you can get your name to, as would you report it properly.
Mario Ariado, Chief of Police. I want to address the recent decision to order a forensic audit of the police department. Transparency and accountability are values I have always stood by, and I welcome any fair and professional review of our operations. However, I feel it's important to ask a direct question on behalf of myself, the officers, and the residents we serve. Are the first selectmen and the finance director accusing me or anyone of this department of fraud or embezzlement? Because that is exactly what this action implies. Let's be clear, a forensic audit is not routine bookkeeping. It is an extraordinary step taken when there are suspicions of fraud, theft, or embezzlement. An audit of this magnitude sends a message, whether intended or not, that the Plainfield Police Department cannot be trusted with public money. That suggestion is insulting, it's damaging, and undermines credibility of the men and women who dedicate their lives to serving this town. If there are specific allegations, I and the department deserve to know them openly. To date, neither myself nor the police commission have been told by the first selectman or the finance director of any concerns that will warrant a forensic audit. Let me repeat that. To date, neither myself nor the police commission have been told by the first selectman or the finance director of any concerns that will warrant a forensic audit. This only comes to light after a vote of no confidence in them by the police off police human over payroll issues. This implication alone risks damaging not only my reputation, but the reputation of the department and the trust that we have worked so hard to build with this community. To leave this implication hanging over the department is irresponsible and unfair. I cannot allow the reputation of this department to be diminished by unaddressed doubts. Clear answers are necessary, and the people of Plainfield deserve nothing less. Our officers serve this community with integrity every day, and their work should not be overshadowed by speculation. Transparency would not only protect this department's credibility, but also reinforce the trust our residents have in us.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Mr. Chair, Paul Shree, 260. New rule moves up, Connecticut will have this. From here tonight, as I looked at this number four, the first time I saw the word forensic was in a New London Day, mentioned by the current finance director, Kelly Bashaw. You shouldn't use words like that in the press if you don't know what they mean. A forensic audit involves using county auditing investigative skills to examine financial records in order to detect, prevent, or provide expert legal testimony to support litigation. Professionals in this field often investigate financial crimes by corporate fraud or embezzlement. Use their findings in court cases as expert witnesses. To become a forensic accountant, a bachelor's degree in accounting is the first step, often followed by experience and certifications like Certified Public Accountant, CPA, or Certified Fraud Examiner. Looking at your agenda tonight, something as so simple as payroll has turned into something more than it really needs to be. I would like you to use some common sense, this board. You get the chief of police, you get the finance director, and you get in the room and you talk this out. This is an adult conversation that needs to be had. This can get worked out, because you're going down a path where you don't like it sued. Not only the town, but individual people. Deception of character is not the right thing to do. Ruining somebody's reputation is not the right thing to do. Under section 4-1I of the Plainfield Town Charter, you don't have the authority to investigate policy procedure, rules, and regulations of the police department. That falls under the police commission, under state statute. So before you spend money on this type of audit, which is not necessary, in which you don't have authority to do, you don't have money appropriated, the board of finance will be put on the spot to authorize money and then be held accountable, okay? You would not be forced to account me and, okay, people are going to end up having a town meeting, and we're going to have problems. This needs to be snipped in the butt. There is no reason for this. There's no reason for it, Paul. I'm talking to you, I'm talking to Peggy, I'm talking to Kevin. This needs to get fixed in-house before it becomes a big joke to the whole community. It does not need to go this far. Now, you're the first selectman. You control your house, Kevin. You take on and fix this, because this need to come out of your mouth, this forensic idea. This is coming from someone else you have authority over. You guys need to sit down and fix this and get it over with and be done with it. It does not rise to a level of what I just read as a definition. Thank you.
Can I, I have, I'm here to talk about the ordinances, ordinance 143, 144. I don't have a problem with 145. 143 was presented earlier this year and talking about ordinance concerning hawking, peddling, soliciting, vending. At the time, it was a hard podge, not very structured. It's not very structured, the problem is it is still fundamentally constitutionally flawed. One, it is still dictating our people calling. Problem is, I looked it up. There is actually a 2025 ruling in, just this year, after the last hearing, that one, the FCC has delegated more to the states, but has not delegated the rights to tell people who to call at the municipal level. So if the state of Connecticut could tell you, the town cannot. Second, there is no definitions of certain people. A prime example is Jeff Gray. I'm a big First Amendment person. Jeff Gray is the person on YouTube that just has a sign that says, "God bless the homeless veterans." He's been arrested multiple times for soliciting. The problem is, the Supreme Court says, "I can solicit." If I sit on the edge of an off-ramp and say, you know, "I want a dollar," Supreme Court has already said I can do it. Don't like it? Too bad. Change the Supreme Court. Worcester, Massachusetts tried to do that, failed completely hard, completely out of that. On top of that, it talks about place to place. Prime example is Conover Farms has a traditional public venue right in the corner. Then the other thing is that, but it doesn't give any expression of First Amendment. There is some, we're getting there, we're about 95% right, but the problem, though, is that there's got to be a line in here that says, "In lieu of court cases, the law, constitution, somebody's rights." Clean that right up. Second of all, ordinance 44, I think this is government overreach. All right, this is really pushing it. The biggest problem I have is fires for ceremonial and recreational purposes shall have the permission of the open burn official. Okay, Memorial Day is here. We all thought I'd have the holidays. You get in there, people, "Hey, I couldn't go to the lake, it's a little bit busy, so let's go and have a barbecue," which is actually exempt, didn't care. But recreationally, who is this person? Are they getting paid? Are they available 24 hours? Do I need to pull a permit? I would like to have, in my 27 brick outdoor fireplace out there, throw a few logs on there without a, you know, a high burn problem. Go out there, have a good time. Sit, have some brewskis. Unknowing nobody. I now need to get permission from the government. Last time I checked, I don't like government overreach. I don't like the government telling me what to do. I think this is a nothing burger. 75% of this could be removed. Beyond that, wouldn't you tell me what to do with my property? Go pound sand. All right? Thank you.
Calling out the Secretary of Plainfield Board of Police Commissioners. Church Street moves up. The Board of Police Commissioners and the Plainfield Police Department value transparency and accountability, and we welcome any review that confirms our practices that align with town policies. But until now, neither the first selectman nor the finance department has raised any concerns about our processing of bills and purchasing, never to the commission, the police department, or to the board of finance. The recent townwide audit, we were never made aware of any issues found with that audit. The first selectman and the finance department recently transferred responsibility for payroll to the department. Why would they do this if you're questioning the financial practices of this department with any validity? It's troubling that this audit was not discussed with the department or this commission until after the police union's vote of no confidence in the first selectman. The audit scope extends into a former chief's tenure, someone who's running for selectman on the team challenging the first selectman. The timing and scope suggest this audit has other motivations. The department has followed established procurement and financial procedures. If there are genuine concerns, we would like to address them directly. Announcing issues now without previous discussion or documented findings undermines the proper process and trust. We need to state the facts. Do we want to make sure that we're in alignment with policies for the town? Absolutely. But no issues have ever been raised before, and the timing, scope, and political context of this audit are very concerning.
Joe Sayarano, 421 North Road, Plainfield, City construction, Kany's Cool Rental, Joey Gunn, you name it, make sure it's on the camera there. We're, the Board of Police Commission, Chair of Police Commission, I will be notifying, we will be notifying you guys that no longer will the police department be dealing with you directly from now on. You'll be going through the police commission to talk to the PD due to the recent events that you've had. We will also be requesting funds for legal representation of a third party, so we don't want your town lawyer representing you and us. So that will be taking place. You just want to make sure everybody's understanding that. I might fumble through this, but kind of jerked off on this, so I want to make sure I say what I got to say right. On the meeting that we had a little while ago, I know Paul had mentioned that we should sit down and talk about this. We did, in that meeting. I asked the finance director right out about what she said in the bulletin about it, and right off the bat, she wanted the lawyer up. So we can't even talk about it with her. She has to get a lawyer, yet you guys want to do stuff to us without us having a lawyer. I would piggyback off of her. I had some notes in there about the finance, nor the selectman ever said anything to the commission or to PD about anything that was a problem. We do have problems with the payroll. We think we got that figured out, but you let us take care of that. Let's see here. A forensic audit, such as you're asking for, it just undermines the PD. Terrible. It's a terrible thing. Terrible thing to do. It's wrong. You know it's wrong, but yet you're still going, you're still trying to go through with it. You never even came to the commission and talked to them about doing it on audit. You guys don't make policies for the PD. You guys don't tell the PD what to do. This doesn't work that way. The commission makes policy, and the commission can tell the PD what to do, not you guys. I've been on the commission three years, okay? Last three or four as the chair. Kevin, I've been on the phone with you, sat in multiple, multiple meetings, trying to get you to work better with the chief and the PD. Other than the police officer's contract, so I'm going to be clear on this and make sure that's on too, right? We want to make sure everyone hears this. For the know-nothing big mouths on social media, I was absolutely fine with what the PD got. Those guys did good under contract. I think that they got a good deal on that. Other than that, it's been one lie after another and backstabbing after another. Kevin, you'll know about that. You know exactly what I'm talking about. That's from you. I was told to leave out the last section.
Turn off the...
I guess really what I want to say is, I have nothing to gain in this or by any means. I have no reason to lie. I have everything to lose pretty much on this, but what's been going on with you and this PD is absolutely terrible. I don't know who's running the town. Is it you or is it Kelly? I'm not sure. Who runs the town? Do you have any answer? Nothing back from that. Let me figure that out. It was going to change anyway as soon as we got out of here, right? All right, that's all I got to say. I can't, Ed, who want to read it? I've tried multiple times. I got so many hours into this. I've been on the phone. I'm about sick of this. If the people of this town only knew what you're all about, you wouldn't get a fucking vote. I'm done. This is going to get carried away.
My name is Sam Derrick. I live at Highland Street in Musa. As someone who has oversight of payroll function, I just wanted to say that I agree. So I just wanted to mention on January 13th of this year, I follow Trav Harmon again on how ordinance 143 infringes on our residents' First Amendment rights, which, from the draft I have, and because you didn't read it out loud last time, I still don't exactly know if what I have is the draft that will be approved tonight or voted on tonight. Trav referenced Supreme Court precedent, Ledwach Tower versus Stratton in 2002, where they struck down a very similar ordinance that required a resident to get a permit before approaching their neighbor. As we discussed tonight, it really encouraged us to read the ordinances, especially one with a lot of debate about it. I think that's just what we can do, is to take good practice. And I have a few questions on the copy that I have, so again, this might not be the right one. So what is the criteria for approval of a license? There's a listing of what is needed for the license, but it doesn't really say what the criteria are. So if there's a physical description that you provide that shows that you're under six feet tall, does that mean you don't get the license? If it is that you drive a blue car, unless it's more than six years old, does that disqualify you from getting a license? If you were convicted or you pled guilty to some speeding tickets, trafficking drugs, or selling booze like CDs out of the back of your trunk, do you not get a license? Or is the nature of the goods where the emergency license that could stop you? Is it okay to sell a Bible but not a polar panel? Will I be denied if I want to sell my used gym socks? Why can farmers go door-to-door and sell their wilted spices but not my gym socks? Why are people under the age of 18 exempt from this ordinance, but also their fee is waived if they apply? What happens when the theater teacher or parent volunteers ask their sponsors for next year's play? Are they going to be fined? We have Celebrate Plainfield, they have extra booth space. Am I going to be fined if I call or walk next door to see my sister and ask her if her small business wants to engage with that booth? Why is the board waiting until the very beginning of municipal election season where it could be a peak time to canvass and a license can only be used by one person who applied? That would impact every candidate that is, or supporter by every RTC, DTC, and those who are unaffiliated or not endorsed by a major political party, meaning they don't have that major donor money. And that would flood the police chief, the police chief with application. If we look at how the police chief approves these, and I'm not saying this would happen, has the ability to deny license based on any of those criteria that I mentioned or anything that's on that application, like the color of someone's skin, or if I sold him a scratched CD from the trunk of my car in 1998? These are silly questions in nature, but they speak to a deeper issue with not only the ordinance language, but the possibility of unspoken motivation and intent behind the ordinance. Thank you.
Yes. Mary Landry, Musa. Just plain and simple, we couldn't afford to give the police department the red dot laser. We couldn't afford to give them their taser, but we can afford a forensic audit. I would like that explained at some point in time tonight during this meeting, please. Thank you.
I have a question. Would you review this, Connecticut? Why a forensic audit on the police department only? What about every other department? Maybe that should be looked into instead of picking only on the police. Because every time we have a budget problem in the town, it seems that the town takes away from the police department first to help manage their finances. So I'm just curious.
I'm in agreement with the crowd tonight. I don't understand why publicly you've expressed twice, Mr. Cunningham, that the payroll issue at the Plainfield Police Department has been resolved, yet you're still going through the forensic audit and you're borrowing taxpayers' dollars to do that, and we're not having a forensic audit of the finance department in the town of Plainfield, especially after I sat in many board of finance meetings and many board of select meetings and seen some things, especially lately with reconciliations of line items without the authority of the board of ordinance. Those things cannot continue to keep happening. Procedures are not being followed, and it's not by the Plainfield Police Department only. So I think this is very discriminatory. I think it's targeted, and I think if Ms. Bishan wants a forensic audit of the Plainfield Police Department, she should step up and allow one to be done in her department as well.
Okay, hearing that, we'll go on to the old business item E1, review the three proposed ordinances as second reading, 143, 144, 145.
Okay, this is a second reading. The last one was a third reading. There's still a draft.
You were saying that you didn't want it done like that? This would be the second reading. What would you like to say?
I would like to say that we need to have a final draft before you go to saying that you want to, that we should be having a reading, and we should be reading it into the minutes, because these guys don't, they don't have any idea within those ordinances.
No.
They have no idea what these three ordinances do, or say, or are. There is drafts. You can't vote on something that's a draft. You have to have a final proposal, read it to the public, and you vote on it. Last time I looked. Am I wrong? Is that...
Ask me what you're what?
Last time, you do stuff, you do stuff properly. Last time, you should read it into the, you should read it out to the public, but it has to be not a draft, it has to be a final, the final copy, not something we're still working on.
Until you actually make it an actual ordinance, it's always going to be a draft.
And it still hasn't been read, uh, still hasn't been...
And you don't have to read it out loud to the public?
Just because you don't have to, doesn't mean you shouldn't.
The public has asked for copies. I've given them copies. What we have to do is be able to push this over to the town for a public informational meeting, let them read through the whole thing, let them have their input, and then be able to go forward. Modifications or not, modifications, then a vote.
Well, part of this says, and we still don't know because we haven't read, the part of this says that anybody who makes a telephone call within the town of Plainfield for soliciting sales, subscriptions, information, business, or any type, gee, how are you going to enforce that? If I call you, ask you to make a donation, or you call me, someone calls me and says, "Would you like to make a donation to some charity that the police department is doing," which doesn't happen, but I'm just asking, how are you going to enforce my phone call? How are you going to find me for that phone call? Or during political seasons when we're calling up our voters? How are you going to enforce that? How is that possible? Also, this email you had with the chief since August 26th was the latest draft of it. I just got it when I walked in the door. So I don't, Chief Ariado, I don't know, I know you've written this, I see your name is attached to it, but I have no time to review it. I've had no time for any. He just handed it to me again, just like the last meeting.
If there was a subsequent change and the chief wanted to make a change, I would see that, but did he agree with everything that was done in the past?
He has some substance things to say here.
He's answering...
On insurance, he has some things to say on the charitable nonprofit. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to do this and this and say, "Well, this is what the chief says, this is what he thinks." It happens all the time. Last meeting, I had a six-inch packet, and I got it 10 minutes before the meeting, so...
Would you like to read each and every ordinance? Go ahead.
I would like to have it in the final form before we do the draft. You're still, at the last meeting, you said we're still working on it.
Let me ask the chief, if you don't mind. You went through all of these questions that were brought to the last public informational meeting. We talked about them via the email. What we have in draft format from the last time, do you see any need to make any further changes, if so, what would they be?
I don't know if there's a need to make further changes. The only thing I would recommend is we terminate to review it like you had reviewed it prior to.
So if you'd like to read that into the record, go ahead, please do.
I'd like the final draft to be read and...
This is the final draft at this point? We bring that to the attorney, and that's fine?
Bring it to the attorney and then read it to the people, because what you're reading right now, the attorney can say, "This isn't right. This isn't, this isn't something you can do." If the attorney hasn't looked at this, and we also have a thing in the town clerk's office for ordinances. Am I wrong? Uh... office for ordinances, am I wrong? That if they look, we're in the process of codifying.
We're in the middle of a codification process, yes.
Right, exactly. Can we now read them?
Absolutely.
Have we done that?
We cannot get to that step until we go through all the steps of the town.
Okay, so they can't do this ordinance?
They can't codify an ordinance that's not on record. It has to be adopted by the town before we can codify something.
So, if we, what if we adopt something that isn't correct, it's against any statute or...
Well, that's why I would echo what the chief says, and we go through the attorney first, have the attorney look at everything, and then report. This is basically step one in a big process, you know? Once you guys approve it, it would then go to a town meeting. There's several steps that we would get to before we actually would implement this. The town would have to vote on it ultimately, and decide if they want to have that one.
Well, the town's going to have to decide whether they want to be able to make phone calls within the town without the chief coming to their door. First page, right here. Hi, it says, part of it says, any solicitor or canv...
What's it under?
It's under solicitor or canvasser, it's the first page.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, this is what this, this part of it says. I can read the whole thing, but we can see a lot, which is fine, before it gets done, we should read it, but it says solicitor or canvasser, any person or business entity, whether principal or agent, who shall go from place to place, or who shall call a added resident either in person or by telephone within the town of Plainfield, without the prior consent. Anybody's cell phone want to be ringing? Without the prior consent document, for the purpose of soliciting sales, subscriptions, information, business, or business of any kind.
A little too broad. Okay, so, thank you. But we're still drafting this?
Okay.
So, can we just scratch that?
I don't have a problem scratching it.
I agree with you, I didn't see that before.
I just think it's...
But how can you regulate telephone calls?
You can't regulate telephone calls.
Door to door, yes, place to place.
Door to door is a little different, and even at that, I think we have, anybody under 18 years old, it says, in one of the parts in here, it says anybody under 18 years old. My concern with that is, what if an adult has a child, and they want to sell stuff? And they get the child because he's under 18?
Yeah.
The child's under 18, and you're not going to let a child with eight go up? A lot of kids under 18, you're not going to let them go solicit whatever for themselves. There's going to be adults. How do you know that 18, that under 18 year old, the adult's not soliciting, and it's the child he's using as a front? Am I wrong? I mean, there's a lot of things wrong with this. Other thing?
Well, this is what we're doing, is trying to straighten it out, right?
Yeah.
That's why they're drafting. That's why they don't read it in time to the public.
I'm reading time, but I would like to, we've been reading this, we've been doing this for, like, a lot of meetings now.
Last meeting, we found out, somebody brought up the certificate of insurance. The chief just emailed, he says that's not a good idea. Because I had time to read it between the pension board and this board meeting, I read his emails.
It's written on August 25th. The chief wrote that on August 25th.
Okay, we received it tonight, I still read it. I had 13 minutes between the meetings, I read it.
I do have the thought that it's okay to read some all this information, and then out of time, you can't make an informed decision like that, you just can't. And then on the other part of that, where it says... I mean, I agree with having, like, someone selling, not learning stands, by the way, but I agree that they should have a permit. I totally agree with that. You should have a permit, there's a process to go through, we need to make sure that people aren't selling blow up toys on our beaches, okay? We got to make sure that they're doing the right, they're doing the right thing. But I don't think we should be adding soliciting by home and stuff like that. So, that definitely needs to go.
Do you have this in your hands for, I don't know, six weeks? Are there other items that you have reviewed and don't like, or ones that you've changed to?
144, 145, I don't have a problem with. The open burn ordinance, I understand completely, because it's the last time that we, when we were in a high, I don't know, the...
Red warning.
Yeah, red warning. Okay, you got to have something, because you don't want people just burning willy nilly. We were in a red warning, and I looked down some of the streets in town, and some of the people had pretty big fires. So, that was, I'm totally in agreement with it. I would also like to clean up on the part that says exemptions. I would like to clean that up a little bit, because that's very, very vague.
On which one? 144?
On 140, on 143, I would like to clean that up, where the exemptions are. It's, the wording of it's not very great. So, I'd like to add exemptions to that, this ordinance shall not apply to roadside agricultural sales, and those that are pre-arranged deliveries, and town approved events. You were giving this, one of your taxpayers sent this to you, and she also sent it to me. I have copies if you'd like. It's an ordinance that she, you know, she does something like this for a living. She did a really good job with it, it cleans it up, it looks a lot more professional. I'm not saying it's got to go line for line, because I still don't like the part where it says soliciting, subscriptions, information, and all that, but it all, where it says exemptions, it cleans it up quite nicely. A little better than what we have in this draft here. I think the ordinance is way too flawed on a lot of areas, and I said that last time.
What I would suggest is to make the modifications either handwritten or in electronic format, give a copy to the chief, so he can review and see what might or might not work, and then we talk about the rest on the Sunday meeting.
That's fine.
I have to bring up one, as far as the recreational purposes, getting permission in the official... Type of open run? Yeah, open run, 144. And on 143, I'd have to listen to all the comments again, anyway. There's too much to make, but all right. And give us another.
Well, yeah, it's basically that what I gave you is, it mirrors what we have to a point, and it cleans up the language really well, and it makes it direct. You don't have any questions on what it is you're trying to say, on some of the, in some of the stuff. But I am totally against the part where it says, shall call as a resident's heater in person or by telephone, with the town of Plainfield, without previous consent of the argument for the purpose of soliciting, subscriptions, information, business, any kind. Please, the chief has enough to do without chasing these people around. And I don't think it's enforceable either. Chief, you haven't been able to stop my cell phone ringing 17 times a day, so I doubt you're going to be able to do it with the town of Plainfield.
So, yeah, I don't know what to do about that, so.
I did want to, just clarify, when you were asking if they would codify it, once we get to a step where that we would be presenting it to the town for an informational meeting or something like that, at that point in time, that's where I would probably send it over to them?
Before or after?
Probably before, it would be a working document in that format, but they're not going to help us write any ordinance.
No, I didn't think they would. I just want to make sure it's not against any statutes that we...
Yeah, so, at this current state, I think it's too early to submit, because it's just so, it hasn't made its way down the pipeline yet, but once we get to that step where we're about to send it off to an informational meeting, or to, you know, that, at that point in time, I'd be uploading documents over to them, but we're too fresh in the process to start that.
Diane?
Yeah.
Anything out of E code that we've sent to them, does come back to a town meeting, though, correct?
Correct, correct. It takes a long time.
We have town meetings on this, essentially, a public hearing.
It depends on Diane.
Town meetings, send it to E code, and then back to a town meeting, once they, if there's corrections, I would assume.
Once it's codified, it's codified.
Right. But they could make changes, so, they could say that.
During the codification process, they could, and then we would go to the town meeting and adopt the new code. Once it's codified, though, anything additional that you add to it, so any new ordinances, is just going to be out of the plan, because you're not going to go back and do a whole codification process. That's on the town to, you know, submit something that's...
So, catching these while they're still in the process of codification?
Yes, but usually you have to have something that we're presenting to the town that we're permitted to write.
Oh, sure.
Right, that is not a draft.
Well, yeah, we would, I would need something a little bit more set and stonewall, if we start sending it out.
We have to return to our panel, just to start off with. Again, a suggestion would be, Diane, if you wouldn't mind, if all of us could follow the information, questions, concerns to you, because you're going to be holding the ordinances eventually, and then we can share that, because it's the chief who I look at this, anyway, over the modifications.
I believe, you know, it does take a long time to get this right. I am happy to see that it is a long process, because that means a lot of us have been looking on these things for a long time. There's no quick judgment calls here, you know, it's not going to be perfect first, second, third time around. It's definitely taking a while to get things to be the right way, and I commend those that have been working on it.
So, 143, we do have some requests to take a look at draft changes. We do want to take a look at 144 for at least one of them, and 145, any questions on 145?
No, about 145.
So, that'll be in the wait until we get the two ready to go. All right, so, we'll continue on with that one. Now, listen to public comments about 144. Yeah, take advice on that. So, there's no motion, because we're going to continue for the readings. Item for New Business F1, considering an act on tax refund requested by the taxpayer with total 41677. You have Engineered Products LLC, 25376, Roland M. Allard, 601, David Kettle, 10616, David Lucio, 2918, and David P. Mitchell, 2166, should be a grant total of 41677. Make a motion to approve the tax refund, 41677.
I'll second it.
All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Item two, Discuss an Act on Change Order from a Front Ramp, we actually have two in your possession. So, change order number one is for furniture install required PVC piping fittings and pipe bedding, 46 and 8 inch PVC piping, for the fittings and the pipe purchasing materials and added labor, $3,030.55. What was your pleasure with that?
My pleasure is to, when this was, when this came out to Benjo, we didn't know they needed this stuff, or was there something you found afterwards that you didn't think?
No, the plans for that front entrance were absolutely perfect. They didn't put any gutter drains in. Years ago, there was gutter drains, but they were all collapsed and filled in, so I suggested they put gutter drains in. I did already put the gutter drains in, whether you guys choose to pay me or not is up to you.
Because you want to do the job right?
But, and then also, well, goes to number two. Our gutter drains go from up to an 8 inch pipe, because of the amount of water that's coming out the roof, but right now, that 8 inch pipe is reduced down to 4 inch to meet existing drains that are there, which defeats the purpose of the 8 inch pipe that can't handle the water that's coming out the roof now. So, that's where the second one goes to new.
So, that would correct all of it?
Yeah, yeah.
So, the 4 inch, it'll be, come from the 4 inch, the 8 inch, to the ground, to the...
Four to six to eight, and then we'll carry that eight out into the parking lot, down to a catch base, and then dump it there.
All right, and that will stop it from backing up and having some of the problems we had before?
Probably not.
All right. I got another question. This didn't need to go, it's not rent, it didn't need to go before planning and zoning?
No, because it wasn't a substantial change to the building. It was something that was already up there, we had rent before. No, it did not.
Okay, that's my question, because it looks like a whole different ramp than what we have.
So, the second one, we've talked about both at the same time, the second one is for additional 771042 to furniture install required, SDR 35 PVC piping fittings and PVC bed. The grant total, and that total was again, the 771042. The grant total for the two changes would be $10,749.7. I'll make a motion to approve the change order, $10,740.97.
I'll second it.
All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Item three, Discuss and approve Honorary Proclamation for National Adult Education Family Literacy Week. This request was given to us, and I think it's an appropriate proclamation, where we're talking about the National Adult Education Family Literacy Week, which is September 15 through the 19th, 2025, whereas more than 43 million Americans can't read and write most basic level, while 62.7 million lack the basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas, in Connecticut, there are 174,259 working age adults from 16 to 14 without high school credentials, and whereas, Connecticut, there are 210,603 adults who do not speak English well or at all, and whereas, in 2324, Connecticut's Adult Education Program provided support for just under 20,000 adult learners, and whereas, American Action Forum estimates that America is short an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across skill levels, and whereas, adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along, continuing in their educational journey and achieve a basic skills to get prepared for a career in college, and whereas, adult education in Connecticut offers low-cost, high-value programs in every community focused on providing a high school credential, citizenship training, English as a second language, digital literacy, and workforce development skills designed to elevate the economic self-sufficiency of our citizens, and whereas, the state of Connecticut celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, so our citizens learn all about adult education options to obtain their professional and personal goals. Now, therefore, I commend that first election program, paying September 17 through, sorry, September 15 through the 19th, 2025, as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week in the state of Connecticut. So, I'd ask you to motion to approve the proclamation. Make a motion to approve the honorary proclamation for National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week.
I'll second it.
All fairs say aye?
Aye.
Discuss an Act on a Forensic Audit and Operational Review of the Police Department Payrolls, Procurement Practices and Procedures, and Asset Corrupture Financial Act. What you have and given was the information for those, you have 11 bid openings, and of the bid openings, you have a list of those groups, and then the recommendation from review of the Finance Director on what you have, which is Carr, Riggs, and Ingram.
What was that, Chris?
I'm sorry, I need you to [inaudible]. Carr, Riggs, and Ingram.
So I think your first question would be, have you, what are your concerns with the police department as far as what they, what you see that they're doing wrong? Or what you suspect they're doing wrong, or what, all of it?
Well, you wanna go back and take a look at all of the payrolls, you know, review back to see what the issues were. And that was something that was brought up.
So with payroll, it seemed to be an issue with the finance director not understanding how police do payroll, and the payroll system that we have not matching what their needs and needs were.
Well, that's your opinion.
That is my opinion, and I've been into HR for 27 years. And when I listened to the chief at one of the meetings, and from what you've explained on a couple of occasions, it doesn't seem to be raised to the, to a forensic audit over payroll issues. Payroll issues are not forensic, forensics are money. Payroll, payroll is money, but it's only time, paying your people. It's not, the police department is doing something wrong. And also, nobody in this town is going to remember that nothing, this is nothing, but nobody's gonna remember that. All they're gonna remember is that the police department had a forensic audit. Nobody remembers what later, they don't remember that it came of nothing. All they remember is the accusation, and that's baloney, absolute baloney. What are your concerns?
Going back, as I mentioned before.
Other than payroll?
Of payroll and all the things that surround payroll. That includes everything you see in the actual confrontation. But you have a copy of.
Yep.
So things should be all looked at. I mean, it all ties into what payroll is, payroll and paying up.
So let me, let me go here. You, you and the finance director, the police department sent you their payroll. The police department have in the past, up until recently, so we gave them full access to the payroll even though we don't trust them. Let's start with that. The police department sends you all contracts, not contracts, but all purchasing, everything. You have to, you and the finance director have to approve all checks, correct? All payments?
For payouts?
Like, if they purchase something.
As far as we know, correct?
As far as you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you had any problems with their purchasing?
I don't understand where you're coming from with this.
Forensic audits, you want their payroll and you want everything forensically done, which is their purchasing, right in, right in the thing. It says right in the card right here, the scope goes back five years. You want your request and, understand, in this packet that you gave me, which is only for the first one, by the way, it's not for the other 10. It says, understand their respective of financial records and their processes and their controls. Alright? Understanding of the perspective of financial records, processes, controls, transactions. They're being approved by you and the finance director, am I wrong?
Of the information that we are giving, correct. And again, the previous payrolls, in some cases, were the of payroll.
Of all the years, how long have you been in select? Six years?
Six years, right.
Okay, in the six years you've been in select pay. Other, before, you've got a vote of no confidence, before they took that vote. Had, was this a concern? Was any of this a concern before that?
I think all is a concern because you're getting.
Was it? I'm asking you.
Yes.
Okay, was it a concern before that? Did you go to the, hold on, there's a process to go through here. Did you, when you had that concern, did you go to the police commission and say, "We have this concern with these things that are going on"?
Never.
No. Did you?
Peggy, we've been talking about this for a long time, we haven't even.
Excuse me, no, you never, you never changed.
This is, this is a board select meeting.
You've been talking about it to who? Who did you talk to about your concerns, other than maybe with the finance director?
Finance director, we've also had multiple meetings on this. We just had a meeting a little while ago and we talked about it. It included a discussion of forensic audit, and there was no problem at that point.
I would, there was a problem at that point at the last select meeting, because I said I didn't.
I didn't say select meeting.
So you've had meetings, private meetings, that nobody was involved in? Other than the people that you, you know, you wanted to involve?
What are you getting at, Peggy?
I'm not getting at anything, I'm just saying it smells like fish. If it smells like a fish, it's a fish.
We sat down with the police department chief.
And you gave them access to the payroll?
Can I finish?
Go over it.
We sat down with the police chief, we sat down with the admin, Peggy. We also sat down with members of the police commission. And we talked about some of the issues that were had.
At no point we discussed forensic audit at that meeting.
Past.
Sorry, did you resolve?
I did, you're listening to live, Kevin.
Kevin, did you resolve?
At the end of the meeting, we actually talked about forensic, and the chief said there was no problem with it.
Oh! Man.
This is what I'm talking about, right here.
It's on camera, you're lying.
I like to take some of the conversation.
Yes, now my point to the whole thing is if you have an issue in this room that we're at. Why, why is nobody in this room aware of it? Not, not, not the general public, I understand.
We were at a meeting and I didn't.
Why is the commission, why is?
Soon, I hope you post this before the election tomorrow.
Well, Travis got in live, so you're all set.
Good.
But my point, the point is, if there was a concern, if there was a problem. The commi, you go to the commission. If you have a problem with the thing, it's only you go to the plan, it's only the commission. This is why we have them.
When you're wrong, just stand up and say sorry and be wrong.
There's a process. And then you didn't follow it, and you haven't.
Where's the process, Peggy?
The process is go to the police commission and bring your concerns to them.
The process is documented, written. We had a sit-down meeting with those people, we tried to work it out.
Yes, and I, and at the last meeting, you gave them, was it, when you had a sit-down meeting with the police chief and the admin and all that, okay? Did you resolve the payroll issue?
We thought we would go to the next step, which we're trying to. This, this step-by-step, Peggy, isn't like you go to a meeting and fix everything right there at that meeting. Doesn't happen like that, you have to go through the payroll.
The beginning of this conversation was you had a problem with payroll. Then you jumped, now you, now you want a forensic audit, which means you wanna go through everything, which I don't have a problem with, and I think it should be the whole damn town.
Well, if you don't think there's a problem with it, then why aren't we talking about voting on it?
I think there's a whole problem with it, I don't think we should have it. I just, we just cut these guys over $100,000 with the last budget. But now you wanna spend $35,000 to have the audit.
There you go.
They're dealing with 15, they're dealing, no, they're dealing with 15.
Peggy, they're the only department they can cut?
I mean, no, there was other partners, but you wanna spend $35,000 more when you cut their budget and then living with 15-year-old tasers? I think, I think there's a better way to do this. I think there's a better way to sit down and talk and be in the room and not say one thing when you're sitting in front of them and do another later. You gotta, you gotta sit down. It's just, it's ridiculous that we're gonna tear the town down in the next six months. It's gonna take years to get that reputation back. And these boys are never gonna be right. They're never gonna be right, they protect your home and your life.
Maybe go away.
Questions?
I have plenty, there's so much said. Just not ready to ask them, I'm gonna have to watch this. There's so much said, there's so many questions that I need to formulate.
Would you like to get some answers too?
I can get some information. Can we table this item?
It's up to you to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to table this item, so I get more information on this.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Very well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item five, discuss and endorse partnership with the discovery group, Mr. Jason Sisto, for redevelopment of the former Inter-Royal Mill property through DECD Niskel Brownfield Rent Program. We have your packet, item five. So we're waiting for the continuation of this, or looking for status of approval through the state of Connecticut, DECD. You can see, as you have in the packet there, the, at a duly called and held meeting at the plant field board select on September 8th, 2025, we're reviewing to discuss entering into partnership with the discovery group and Mr. Jason Sisto for the redevelopment of the former Inter-Royal Mill property through DECD Niskel Brownfield Rent Program. Upon completion of deliberations and consideration of the qualifications as proposed scope of the work, discovery group and the board select nearby formally approved and endorses the town plant field partnership with the discovery group, Jason Sisto, for the planning, coordination, execution, the former Inter-Royal Mill redevelopment. This approves, this approval reflects the board's commitment to the safe effect of the timely redevelopment of the site at Tony Reservoir in alignment with the local, state, and federal guidelines that the town acknowledges discovery group's role as a key partner in supporting the successful transportation, transformation of the property for the future benefit of the community and economy. This status of approval is issued as a formal acknowledgement of the town's support and cooperation in all forthcoming phases of the project approved by plant field board select.
So this, this is for the partnership to, is anybody gonna buy it?
The, what we did was, we put a application in with Jason Sisto. He gave the plans to the state DECD along with our application, you know. So we'd like to do that continued partnership. The idea is eventually he will take it.
But there's nothing in writing saying we will do this.
Right.
At the end, this isn't a quick profile of, we're gonna be a partner with you and at the end of the day.
It's not so to actually go for the DECD Niskel Brownfield Rent.
Because at the end of the day, this isn't a.
No, it's not a.
It's not something we're saying, okay, you help us, we'll help you, and at the end, you're gonna have property. It's just a partnership, right?
Correct. Excuse me, am I allowed to ask a question? No. So.
I'll make a motion to endorse the partnership with this discovery group, Mr. Jason Sisto, for the development of the former Inter-Royal Mill property with DECD Niskel Brownfield Rent Program.
Okay, I will second that. Any other discussion? Very well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Post.
Motion carries. I will mention the one item, I remember, well, it's not on this agenda, but we have a supposed meeting on the informational meeting we had scheduled for the town. We are likely to have a meeting because we just don't have access to the, to the program.
It's not even on the town website, nobody knows about the meeting. We've had that scheduled since last special meeting, the date was the 11th was before that.
Because we're folding off the secret end.
I know, but it's, people are, their time, their time is money, they just know about.
What's your suggestion then, okay?
My suggestion is put, having had put it on the, on the town website, because there's still one coming up for the 24th that's still not there.
I don't even know if we're gonna have that.
But you're not, it's okay not to know, Kevin, it's okay. But you can at least tell people that they're gonna, it's gonna be there. Okay, so we might not be able to do it because of the ramp, but we're gonna make sure we got that right.
I would have a ramp open for tomorrow, I would put temporary ramps.
I know, I'm only kidding. But anyway, do the best.
You can do that, but.
But my point is, the meeting for the 11th, which we accidentally, we accidentally scheduled on September 11th, we went back and changed it to the 10th. Note about that for the last 10 days. On the 24th, we knew about the meeting for the sale of the ECC on the 27th. That's still, you guys don't know that. I put it on my face today because I, I, you don't know that. Time, your time is important, and it's worth, you get to schedule your time and you can't tell, tell me that you don't know anything about till two days before. Am I wrong? And I know we might not be able to have it, but.
What is your suggestion?
My suggestion is put it on the town's site, and then you can get to it if you can't have it. But at least let people know that we're gonna have it, or you're, you wanna have it.
Tomorrow morning, September 24th, will be a lot on the town website.
I should have been up on the website last week. At least you guys do know about the 24th.
Did you actually notice this 97 meeting, or can't?
I'm going to have to speak with your chairman for tomorrow morning and talk about this cancellation of that.
Which was never posted. Can you cancel, Nadia, that was never posted?
We can properly put it up as a cancellation.
But you never posted it, so how was it a cancellation?
Peggy, we hear, why you put it up as a cancellation? Because that way we can actually use that to go to our next board select meeting, pre-order the next meeting. Anything else? Other than this, I did receive an email from a resident. And the email was concerning the possible sale of the ECC building, and to which I was posed the question, just wondering how is it appropriate for the board select to have a meeting and then to vote to sell a town-owned building and then hire a real estate company prior to getting approval from the resident as clearly stated in the town charter, any cost? Seems like putting a cart before a horse. I would have included art, but I'm sure about his email address. Sincerely, Luisa Trace. And we talked about this before, we talked about how you can't bring something to the table of a going to sell a building without having to knowing who the person is and who the groups are, and then how much they're looking to, by building, building or whatever property is for. Can't do that. So, at this point, we were looking to see if we even had any offers for it. Then, we're having a public, I'd like to have a public informational meeting on that, on the 24th. That would allow the two different applicants to get their presentation at that meeting, allow for public comments to be made on it, and then just, again, so public informational meeting only. So really can't even bring something forward until you have an opportunity for sale. So, it's not so much, I mean, that's a fair question, but it's not written that way in the charter. So I would disagree with this person about that. I also didn't think it would be appropriate for people who were, first of all, you weren't included on the email. And you weren't included on the email, and this person should have known where to find that information because it's all public information on the town website, on our board. All of your emails are right there. But the other piece of that is that they're, you know, kinda making it political because we're putting other people on it. I didn't think that was appropriate, though.
Who were the other people on the email?
Oh, let's see, Paul Sweet, Mike Super, and Tom Stinkowitz.
Everybody.
That's all I had to say on that one.
You're really just political with the question, correct?
That's a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.